Welcome to the Oshkosh Area School Board Candidates Forum presented by the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County and Oshkosh Media. This event will be simulcast on W O C T 101.9 FM radio. The forum may also be assessed via video streaming on the Oshkosh Media website at OshkoshMedia.org and on the Oshkosh Media YouTube channel. I'm Margie Davey, the President of the League and your moderator tonight. The League of Women Voters seeks to inform citizens about major public policy issues and about candidates seeking office. We never support nor oppose any political party or candidate. For more information about the League, access our website at L W V Winnebago dot org. Due to the continuing pandemic, while we are conducting this forum in person, everyone in the room has agreed to remain masked at all times. We have no audience, but we advertised for and are using questions submitted to the League through our website or by phone. Our panelists have also prepared questions. Joining me on the panel for this forum are Karen Schneider, publisher of the Oshkosh Herald, and Breman Kezey, local government reporter for the Oshkosh Northwestern. Six candidates are competing for two seats on the Oshkosh Area School Board for a three-year term. These include two incumbents, Stephanie Carlin and Liz Sizla-Gi. I even practiced that, I want you to know, and four challengers, Kelly DeWitt, Sarah Nowey, Casey Radke, and Matt Tukey. Candidates, our timekeeper will give you cues. Thank you for keeping your answers as brief as possible so that we may cover as many issues as possible tonight. When you see the stop sign from our timekeeper, that means period. If you insert a comma and keep talking, I will stop you. Period. At the conclusion of this forum, I will offer you each a 30-second opportunity to clarify or rebut something said earlier if you choose. Public questions were solicited in advance and may have been edited for brevity and clarity. Candidates have not seen the questions beforehand. Well, we will start with opening statements. And going alphabetically, I will give you each two minutes to summarize your background, qualifications, and your reason for seeking election or reelection to the Oshkosh Area School Board. So going alphabetically, we'll start with you, Stephanie.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Carlin, and I am humbly asking for your vote on February 15th. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'd like to thank the candidates who are here this evening as well for your willingness to serve our community. I have three children that have benefited from attending Oshkosh schools. My oldest son graduated in 2020, and I currently have a freshman and a senior at Oshkosh West High School. I became involved in our schools when my son attended kindergarten at Lakeside. The school board had recently closed Green Meadow and had considered closing Lakeside. I started going to school board meetings to lobby for an addition to Lakeside. That led me to join the Oaklawn Referendum Committee. The referendum passed with ease, and it was a very proud moment for our community. I was elected to the school board in 2016. I have completed two terms, and it has been an absolute honor to serve our students, teachers, staff, and families. Before every decision, I ask a simple question: What is best for students? This question is my guiding light. And also, tonight, I ask, what is best for students? I believe serving all students, and I believe that all means all. I support building equity across our schools, and I support efforts to promote diversity and inclusion. What is best for students? Attracting and retaining high-quality teachers is best for students. I recently read a study that said one in four teachers considered leaving the profession as a result of the pandemic. We need to recognize the pandemic has asked our teachers to do more despite having fewer resources. We need to acknowledge that teaching is the profession that makes all professions possible. Our district has amazing teachers who put students first every day, and I thank them for their dedication. What is best for students? Keeping our schools open is best for students. Virtual learning, as we all know, has its limits. I support efforts to keep our schools open. What is best for students is continuity on the school board. I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Kelly.
Hi, thank you for having me here tonight. It's a privilege to be here. My name is Kelly DeWitt. I am a lifelong resident of Oshkosh, and I am a product of the Oshkosh Public School District. I have first and foremost, I'm a mom of two young kids, ages two and four. My four-year-old is gearing up getting ready to start kindergarten next fall, excuse me, next year, so I really became interested and started paying attention here to the Oshkosh schools. I've spent most of my adult career working on behalf and with advocating for children and families, more specifically, a diverse population of children and families who do rely heavily on the support of the Oshkosh Public Schools. And throughout my years of advocacy, I've realized and have developed an understanding of the importance of public education and the role that it can play as our children grow old to adults. I'm hoping to bring some community voice back to the district here and our board, and I humbly ask for your vote come February 15th.
Thank you. Sarah.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Sarah Dordinoey. I am a mother of two children, one of which at Carl Trigger Middle and the other a freshman at Oshkosh West. And I myself, as Kelly, I'm a product of the school district too. I also went to U W O, and I have degrees in marketing, entrepreneurship, as well as Spanish. In my day-to-day life, I am a president of a local trucking company that has been very successful since 1982. And I have something in common with the school district in that if anyone knows trucking, they know that looking for talent to be your drivers is a never-ending battle, so I do feel for the school district because that's my everyday life. My motivation for running for school board is our, over the last couple of years, our school district has been kind of in the news for all the wrong reasons, in my opinion. We had the 2019 survey of the school staff that was kind of overlooked for a couple of years. We also had the complaint by the superintendents that was overlooked for a few months. And for those reasons, we lost people to our district. We lost staff, we lost students and their families, and we have to somehow figure out how to bring them back. I've also been a little bit disappointed, and I was guilty of this too, is I never really paid attention to who was on our school board, and I probably, like many, filled in the little circle on the ballot. So I'm glad to see that there's actually people running, and I hope we continue to do that because I think our school board candidates need to prove that they want to be in that position, and they need to speak for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Casey.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Casey Radke. I am a father of four children, all of which are five and under, so not yet in the schools. I as well grew up in Oshkosh and went through the Oshkosh School District. I come from a family of teachers. My father was a teacher in the district for almost 30 years, so I do have some firsthand experience with how things have progressed over that time period. My background is primarily that of engineering. I went to North Dakota State Manufacturing Engineering, and I have spent my last 15 years basically leading and managing a few different companies. And I guess the biggest reason why I decided to run for school board is there, in my opinion, there seems to be a lot of, I guess it would be fear and uncertainty, and I think we're looking at things in a negative instead of the positives that are coming out of this. And I guess I would like to be perhaps a, what's the word, just shine a light on different things instead of what we have been the last couple of years. I don't see this as the negative that is being pushed by the media and so many other areas of life, so that's why I'm running, and I ask you for your vote.
Thank you, Casey. Liz.
Yes, Liz Sizla-Gi, and I just want to thank you for being here and for hosting this event. I am very passionate about having an informed electorate. So I'll introduce myself. I am a licensed teacher who has experience teaching both high school and middle school English. I taught a diverse group of students at one of the schools I worked at. Ninety-nine percent of the students were on for your reduced lunch. I'm currently a graduate student at the University of U W O. I will graduate in 2023 with a degree to be a school counselor. That was always my end goal after being a teacher. I'm also the mother of four O A S D elementary students, so they've taken up a lot of my time in recent years. I love them, but it's a lot of work. Education has been a passion of mine for as long as I can remember. My father was my elementary school principal. My mother, my brother, they all work in education. So during my three years of service on the board, the board has created the Long Range Facilities Plan, and I want to thank the community for supporting that in its first referendum. We created the strategic plan. We implemented the staff Gallup survey that was conducted for the first time in 2020. We hired the new superintendent, Dr. Davis. And over my time on the board, I have served as the chair of both the education and the policy committees, and I am currently the board treasurer. The last three years of serving on the board has given me firsthand insight into what our district's greatest needs are. Right now, our priority should be improving student literacy outcomes. It's imperative that we start seeing more than a year's worth of growth in all our classrooms across the district. I was one of the first teachers in the nation to be evaluated based on my students' growth, and my students did see more than a year's worth of growth. So I have firsthand experience with what this takes to get done. It takes proper resources and a lot of support and collaboration between staff and school buildings, and I am ready to lead this charge in seeing our student scores improve. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Matt.
All right. My name is Matthew Took. I describe myself as a Christian husband, and I'm a father of a large blended family of eight. And it's really my pleasure to be here tonight, and I thank everybody who's hosting us. I've lived in Oshkosh for the past 16 years, and I've had children in the district for the past 14, and I've seen a lot happen in the district over that time. I saw handwriting kind of go by the wayside. I saw the introduction of the Chromebooks. I saw Common Core come in. I've seen the new math. Some of the changes that have come in have not been the best thing for the children that I've witnessed over the years. Like a lot of people, I'm guilty. I have not been paying attention to the actions of the school board and the decisions that are being made, and so I've really started paying close attention. And I really got involved mainly when the COVID issue started to come up. I became very curious on how decisions were being made, and there was not a lot of transparency there. And I decided I wanted to run for school board. There was three main reasons, and I saw parents being shoved out of the process. And the specific instances that made me run was giving the superintendent the ability to choose masks for the children instead of the board, allowing children to change their gender pronouns without even telling a parent. And lastly, the naming of the new school. Parents selected a certain name, administration recommended another, and the board went with it. Parents are being shut out of the process, and I feel I'm the voice of the parents.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, with that, we will move on to our questions, which have been generated by either public submissions through our Facebook page, excuse me, our website, our email, or our phone. I've had calls at home. Each of you will have 90 seconds to respond to a question submitted either by the public ahead of time or by one of our panelists. The panelists are also using some of the questions that were submitted. But I am going to begin with the first question for tonight, and let's see. I think we'll start this time with Kelly and work our way down. Okay, the first question is, "The school board has made a commitment to nine principles of the Civility Project, as illustrated on the poster in front of you and on the wall of the city council chambers right over there and the school district board meeting room. We will be following those principles at this forum. They are: Listen, pay attention, don't gossip, show respect, apologize, give constructive criticism, be inclusive, be agreeable, and take responsibility." The question is, "How do entries on your Facebook page and your campaign rhetoric align with these nine principles?" Kelly.
That's a great question. I would say first and foremost, listening, being able to listen to multiple thoughts, ideas, and also taking responsibility. I would say that anytime I am addressed with a question, I do take it upon myself to answer that question while showing respect as well as not gossiping.
Okay, thank you. Sarah.
So I guess, you know, obviously, all of these are very important. I think what I've done, as Kelly had stated, was, you know, listening is a very important issue, especially to our community, and I know that there's going to be people that are not going to agree with me. I've dealt with that as a female in the trucking industry, that you're sometimes not going to be able to convince anyone of anything, and that's fine because we all have to have that, you know, we all have our own story, and we all own what our history is, and that kind of decides what kind of person we're going to be. So I understand that we're always going to have disagreements. I think also I've shown the ability to include a lot more people. Our group in this last year has got more people to speak at school board meetings and encourage them to find their voice because, again, I want to make sure that we always have candidates going forward every year for school board. So those would be the ones that I would just start out with because I think I'm a really good lister, and I try to find a common ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Casey.
I guess the first one that I would notice is the pay attention. This is definitely a new process for me, not something I thought I would be doing in my life, but here I am. And in doing that, you realize that there are a lot of people looking at you regardless of what you're doing, what you're posting on Facebook. And that opens your eyes to a lot of things. And then the next one I would go to right off of that is taking responsibility. A lot of what I do and what I say, it's all stuff that I myself had to do and think about first, and it's kind of a two-edged sword. I think a lot of us, especially, oops, excuse me, these days, and I'm guilty of as well, is we do attack and criticize others and look to blame others instead of ourselves first, and that's been a really humbling thing for me, especially the last couple of months, is, am I doing these things that I'm trying to hold other people accountable to? And yeah, so that's been an eye-opener for me, so that's something that I personally have been working on. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Liz.
Yeah, one of my mottos has always been to be inclusive, to make sure that everyone feels like they can have their voice heard. And with that comes showing respect because as people have emailed or spoken up at school board meetings, there's often varying opinions, so making sure that I show respect for different opinions. And I've had moments where I have disagreed with some people, and I've stayed after the meeting to discuss those disagreements with them and found some common ground where even if they were upset about how I voted, in the end, we were able to find some sort of common ground. And I've always taken responsibility for when people are upset with how I may have voted. I acknowledge that it's valid for them to be upset, and I take responsibility for my choices and my actions. I definitely, I don't gossip, and that's just not something I'm interested in. Oh, give constructive criticism. We've received some emails that are just like great examples of constructive criticism, and they have helped me become a better school board member, so I really value receiving constructive criticism, and that is, that's an important piece of being a leader. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt.
Yes, I just try, it's interesting experience, like Casey was saying, and I actually put this out on Facebook. We are volunteer, many of us are just parents from the community that are seeing a need and stepping into a void, and one of the things I try to do is just be authentically myself. And I put that out there of who I am, and it's been kind of an interesting experience to feel the blowback and how do you deal with that? And so basically, there is a big process of listening and learning and working through a lot of questions, sometimes hostile, but always being respectful, I think is so important. You really never get anywhere when you raise your voice or call people names, and that's something that I've always really taken to heart and tried to do. And it's okay to say, you know what, I was out of line, because I know in my life I've had to apologize a lot as well. And, you know, gossiping, it just doesn't get anywhere. There's enough serious issues out there, and we don't have to gossip or make things up. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Stephanie.
Thank you. I love this, the Civility Project. It takes me back. I used to belong to a group called Citizens for a Stronger Oshkosh, and Tom Grogan was very instrumental in that group, and he helped us actually develop these beautiful guidelines to live your life by. And you asked about social media, and I actually do not spend very much time on social media. I try to avoid it. But as a result of being on Citizens for a Stronger Oshkosh, I now manage a page called Positively Oshkosh, which I think reflects the values that I value in this community. I started posting on Positively Oshkosh because I was really disenchanted with the negative comments that were out there, and there were so many great things about Oshkosh that I really wanted to just find something good in every day. And so that is kind of what I've been doing on Positively Oshkosh, and I am always open to new dialogues. I am always open to being inclusive. I share almost everything people send me on that Facebook page. And I also agree with Liz. I think that we have done as a board a good job of taking responsibility when we have made mistakes, and we have made mistakes. And I do appreciate the parents that have contacted us and let us know when they have questions about some of our decisions, and I think that that is one of the most important pieces of being on the school board member, is to make sure that you take responsibility for your decisions and that you are able to explain why you came to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, now we're going to go to one of our panelists. I'm going to ask Karen to ask her first question, and this time, let's go in reverse order. Start with Matt.
Matt, we'll start with you. So last week, the Board of Education approved a 4.7% pay increase for those in the school district, teachers, paraprofessionals, custodian, maintenance, secretaries, administrators, and all the other staff, largest one in 10 years. Not that it's not past due or anything, right? But along those lines, we've heard about the void of some of the teachers leaving the district, the problems of getting substitute teachers. What are other ways that you would promote to show support for staff to retain and acquire those teachers?
Yeah, that's great. First of all, I might surprise people. I was pretty well in favor of what the board did to approve those raises. I really think it's super important to pay teachers fairly, to, it helps with recruitment, retention, all of that. And they need to be paid fairly in line with other similar-sized communities. So what I would like to see, though, is something more merit-based, and I would like to see the best teachers rewarded the most. I'd like to see bonuses, pay increases based on merit, rather than just blanket across the board, everybody gets 4.7%. That was my only criticism with the decision that the board made, but in general, I want to support teachers, and I really want to support the good ones.
Thank you, Matt. Liz.
Yes, so what Matt's referring to, it's merit and bonus pay. I mentioned in my opening statement that I was one of the first teachers evaluated based on student growth, and that's how it worked, is that teachers could gain bonuses. And as long as you were sufficient, everyone moved up. People who excelled got a bonus for that year, and I actually felt that was a successful way to create a salary base. In order to recruit more subs, that's been something I've always been passionate about. Actually, and while I've served on the board for three years, we've increased the substitute teacher pay three times, so that's another thing I have always supported. I think something that would help our teachers is more collaboration time, which we are offering in the next school year calendar. They will get full days of collaboration instead of just half-days of collaboration. Those professional development days really rejuvenate teachers, especially if they're also given time to work in their classroom for lesson planning and for grading. And I think another important thing is just honoring the contract, making sure we aren't asking teachers to come in before their contract starts, or that if there is a training they can attend, that they're being paid their rate for it, like when they have to cover a colleague's class as a substitute, that they're being paid their rate extra, you know, above their daily salary. And just acknowledging the good work that they do with Teacher of the Year, Thanklets, and other sort of recognitions of their performance. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Casey.
Just as the first to have said, I as well was in favor of the raise. I think it's, as you said, kind of a long time overdue. That was something, growing up, that I heard my father speak of quite a bit. The other thing that I've heard from not only him but many teachers these days as well is there seems to be, and this is over 20 years, this isn't the last year or five years, but quite a while, is there's been a shift from kind of the freedom to teach as, somebody might do something very different than the teacher down the hall, and they both might get very good results. And the shift, it seems, is it's gone more towards checking the boxes of a particular rigid curriculum. So I guess what I would like to see is the freedom for a teacher with a unique personality or style to use that to their advantage instead of kind of being confined to the box of a curriculum, I guess you could say.
Okay, thank you. Sarah.
So I am most definitely supportive of that increase. I think it is long overdue. Actually, last year, I had looked at the salary comparison between Oshkosh schools and our neighboring, and in some cases, the base salary was $10,000 different in that Oshkosh was making $10,000 less for teachers. And yet, we have a very top-heavy, I would say, administration side of things, and I much rather see those funds going to the people who are teaching. Also, what's curious about that raise is it was, the ability to give it was because the district is going self-funding, which is kind of a move that a lot of people in business always consider, and you kind of, you have a budget, but you move things around to be able to afford what you really want. So I'm glad they're using more of a business principle and going to self-funding. So what I've done, and this actually started last year, a little over a year ago, I had my first substitute teaching job. I am not a substitute teacher by any way, shape, or form, but I became one because there was a call to have substitute teachers. And I got certified, and I've done a number. I've tried to go to different schools. I've not done any school more than once because I want to see and experience just a little bit of the schools. So I've been encouraging people in the last year to become subs themselves, and I figured if I was going to ask people to become a sub, I should do it myself. So that is how I contributed in that fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Kelly.
That's a great question. I as well am in favor of the 4.7 increase. However, I think first and foremost, what we need to be providing to our teachers is an ear to listen. We need to be asking them what it is they need in order to be successful. ear to listen. We need to be asking them what it is they need in order to be successful in the classroom, to provide our children with the best education possible. I also agree with the merit increases, looking at, at that. And going off of what Sarah said, with the second highest administration budget in, in the state, I believe that we could look at, you know, divvying that money a little bit differently. But I think it's very important to be asking our teachers and our staff what it is they need to be successful.
Thank you. Stephanie?
I am so glad that you asked this question, because this is something I'm really passionate about. We need to elevate the teaching profession, and we need to start paying our teachers what they are worth. And teaching is the profession that makes all professions possible. And we do not value our teachers enough in our society, in my opinion. And in anticipation of this question, I had done some research, looking at what other countries pay. And believe it or not, America, which is allegedly the greatest country in the world, we are sixth behind Germany, Canada, Netherlands, Australia, and Ireland. All of those countries pay our, their teachers more than we do. If you are a teacher in Luxembourg, your average starting salary is $100,000. The average starting salary for a teacher in America is roughly around $62,000. And in Wisconsin, it's about $59,000. So, not only is Wisconsin on the lower end of the pay scale nationally, I think that we need to do what we can to get up there, be competitive. As somebody mentioned earlier, we lose teachers to other districts because they can literally go down the street and make an extra $20,000 teaching somewhere else. I do know that there was a teacher that, she had her child at Lakeside, and she wanted, she had the opportunity to teach with her child, but she drove to Fond du Lac every day because she was able to make $20,000 extra, just like that. So, I definitely, obviously, I support the increase, but mostly, I really want to see the teaching profession become more valued as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Bremmen, it's now your turn to ask a question. Did I get everybody? Yeah, I did. Okay. It's your turn to ask a question. And this time, we will start with Sarah.
So, over the last couple of years, obviously during the pandemic, the board members have stated support for the district's guiding principle, students first, and trying to make sure that they protect the health and safety of students and staff. How do you think that the district has responded to maintaining those goals? And what would you do if you were a board member to continue to ensure that the students and staff are safe and healthy?
Okay. First off, I think that there's a little bit of misunderstanding what safe is. So, I usually, and it's just a way of saying it, but I usually say safer, because we all know that we're not going to be inherently safe in anything that we do. There's always a risk. I would say that I, myself, had I been on the school board at that time, I never would have voted even one time to have virtual learning. I think there's a safety, and I think there's also a mental health safety, that I think was affected by having virtual learning. So, that's just a little bit in the past. Going forward, I, I'm glad that we're in person this whole year. And I thank the administration for making that a priority this year, because I wish it would have been a priority last year, and I wish we wouldn't have had to fight so hard to get our children back to in-person, because I think it affected a lot of kids. So, in a lot of different ways, in some academically and some socially. And I hope, in short order, that we're able to fix that. But it's, it's, it's concerning, so.
Thank you. Casey?
Yeah. I would say, in the beginning, it was a little scary for everybody, myself included. I was afraid as anybody, I'll admit it straight out. After a few months in, it seemed to be that what we were told by, you name it, weren't exactly as they, they were set up front. And now, two years into this, or just about, we have a lot of data to make these decisions on. And I believe it was two weeks ago, and I'll just get into some of the facts. It was a little less than 580 children who had succumbed to COVID under the age of 19. And there were six in Wisconsin. And this is over the last two years. Of those numbers, 75% had three or more comorbidities. So, that means that nobody in Wisconsin, and only about 80 children in the United States over the last two years, had died due to COVID. That's actually incredible. I would say we don't have to worry about anything. But when you look at other, such as, she said, mental health or suicide rates, those have skyrocketed. I don't even want to say those numbers. So, I think our priority is way off-base on this. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you. Liz?
Yes, I agree with some of what's been said. I, I think our students are safest when they are in schools. I never voted in favor of full virtual learning. I didn't support that last year, because our students thrive and grow best when they're with our teachers. I did always support following the data, meaning if there is an outbreak or if we can trace COVID to a classroom, there are times that, unfortunately, that means we have to have those classrooms go virtual. Thankfully, this year, that's been very minimal. And I also agree with the points that have made, been made about mental health. I think COVID has impacted our students much more in their emotions and their, their behaviors than it probably has their health, their physical health. This is just speaking for most children. Obviously, some children have lost family members and, and suffered a great deal because of the physical aspect of COVID. But I am very appreciative that the school district, during all of this, invested in a new behavior management program to try and help keep our students on track, to learn the life skills that they need to get through these kinds of difficult disruptions. And I look forward to reviewing the data about how this behavior management program can increase our students' performance and help our teachers feel like they have better success in the classroom. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Matt?
I've been probably the most vocal critic of the way that administration and the board has handled COVID. Few people that aren't involved or have children in school understand the psychological impact that virtual learning has had, the learning impacts that masks have on our youngest students, particularly our 4K and kindergarteners that still learn through facial recognition. I have presented information repeatedly to the board about the effectiveness or the lack of effect of a mask. And I, I really, really think, you know, if we were going to handle this properly, the number-one way to mitigate COVID-19 is through ventilation. In discussions that I, I had with the county health department, they identified masks as really the least effective of the mitigation, and ventilation, number one. The district received $20 million for COVID relief. We could have done something for ventilation, but instead, we got our kids stuck stewing in masks. And it's a shame.
Okay, Stephanie?
Okay, so I, I have to admit, I, the answers have been kind of all over the place on this question. The question is about keeping our teachers safe in classrooms. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's kind of talking about the policies of promoting safety and health for students and staff.
Okay, great. Thank you. I am proud to say that the, the board voted 7-0 to approve two mental health days for our teachers. I think that that was a very good decision. And I fully supported that. I do believe that the pandemic has caused a lot of stress and anxiety for our students and our teachers. I also agree with the, my, the board, that we need to do whatever we can to keep schools open. Having had three kids in virtual learning, myself, we all know that being in-person is always better. That said, I do believe that we should follow the recommendations of the CDC. And I believe that the superintendent has done a really good job following the numbers. And I support doing whatever it takes to keep our kids in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Kelly?
I, I agree with pretty much what everyone else has said here. I think that it's very important to keep our kids in school. A lot of kids don't feel safe outside of school, and school is their safe zone. So, I think that it's very important that we, that we do whatever is needed to keep our kids in school in regards to mental health and, and providing any type of services related to that. I think, again, it's important, we need to be asking our teachers and our staff what exactly it is that they need. As far as, you know, running a risk of falling behind, our students are already behind enough. So, we need to be able to do whatever it is to keep our students in school five days a week. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Karen, we go back to you for another question. And let's begin with Liz.
All right, Liz. So, a few of you have already commented about concentrating on the positive and not so much on the negative. So, how would you describe the three most important strengths of the district at this time?
All right, so, it's tricky to start, because I like to take notes and get my ideas together. I think the three most positive strengths of the district right now are the dedication that we've seen from staff. I have just been amazed with my own children's teachers, that they continue to put a smile on their face every day when they greet students. And they continue to help students navigate a difficult school year. But, I mean, there have been three school years impacted by COVID. I think that's one of our strengths. I believe the second strength, I would actually give a thank you to the community for this, is the, our long-range facility plan. When I first ran for the board, that was one of the main reasons that I ran, is I lived in Oshkosh a long time, and I kept thinking that new schools would be built, or that there, there was a plan somewhere about what the order and priorities were. And when I realized there wasn't, I really wanted to get involved and help create that. So, I think that would be a second strength, is the long-range facilities plan. And I believe our third strength would be, I think I'd credit the students and just their involvement in extracurricular activities. And, you know, the community's program at Oshkosh North, and the global studies program at Oshkosh West, and the amazing programs that our elementary students are doing. My kids have done a lot of coding and things in maker spaces, and just kind of those extra activities that are a part of our school.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Casey, let's go to you next.
Would it be possible to?
Yes.
Come back to me?
Oh, come back to you?
Yeah, I-
No, but we'd be happy to reread the question.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. How would you describe the three most important strengths of the district at this time?
I think the biggest strength for me would be the kids, and how they've, I guess, had to transition and tolerate all of this. It's new and different for everybody. And I guess I'm, I'm talking specifically about all of the COVID, and how that has changed things dramatically for everybody, not just kids, parents, district, but everybody on earth, let's be honest. And it's much easier for someone like myself, who's been around, seen a lot of things, to deal with this, where somebody who is, say, five years old, or 10 years old, or 15, this has been a good percentage of their life. So, I think I'm just going to keep my answer to say, the biggest positive I see is how the kids have been so resilient to this, no matter what has been thrown at them. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to you next, Sarah.
Okay. I'm going to take a little bit different look at this, because I think this group of people deserves everything. And it kind of comes off my, my everyday life, that we owe a lot to our truck drivers. And I think everyone here owes a lot to, not necessarily my truck drivers, but truck drivers in general, for your toilet paper and your paper towels. So, my first strength would be the creativity of staff, who have gone from keyboard warriors and Zoom meeting leaders, to in-person cleaners of all the, the desks and, and everything, and trying to keep everyone as safe as possible. My second would be the resilience of district staff, because they didn't give up. And I, I know it was hard for some of them, and some of them were very concerned. And the, the key to leadership is to support the people in the time when they aren't feeling, they, they don't feel real strong and that they can go on. So, I think they've been really resilient in being able to keep going. And then finally, I think it would be the faith of the teachers, that knowing that sooner or later, this will be done, and we'll go back to as normal as possible. So, I thank them for having faith in, and kind of trudging on and getting to that. Last year was not good. This year is significantly much better. So, I thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
I would agree with Casey in, in the children's ability to transition back to school. I can only imagine how difficult it has to be to, to get yanked from a five-day in-person learning to then go an entire year learning virtually online. And then to, to be able to transition back to normal, I think deserves huge kudos for the kids for that. Also, our teachers and staff ability to kind of pick up and help out where and when is needed is tremendous. And also, I've noticed a lot of the staff and teachers can-do attitude, they're not, you know, giving up and, and looking at the positives rather than the negatives, and, and realizing and acknowledging that they can do this, and we will get through it.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie?
I love that you asked this question, because there are so many positive things in our school district. And I feel like we don't do a good job talking about them as much as we should. For example, we're getting a new middle school, and that's really exciting. It's going to be state-of-the-art. It's going to have everything you could dream of and more. And I don't know if you've had the opportunity to travel much outside of our district, but we're behind other districts in getting new schools. A lot of districts, you know, Nina is getting a new high school. So, we, that is a positive. We are getting a new middle school. Another positive is our teachers, teachers, teachers. I know that's already been covered, but I can't emphasize it enough. Our teachers have made the pandemic so much easier for a lot of kids. They've gone beyond the call of duty. If you've ever watched your child on a Zoom meeting and see some of these creative things that these teachers come up with, it's just, it's been amazing. And so, that, our teachers are positive. Another positive that we have is leadership. We have a new superintendent who is doing a great job navigating us through this next phase. And I really support some of the decisions that he's made. I also want to mention, I only have 30 seconds left, but we have so many programs like Wave Robotics, Communities at North, Global Academy. We just got the new Wave Robotics facility at North, which is exciting. So, I appreciate this question, because there is a lot to be excited about in the Oshkosh area school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Matthew?
All right. Well, I didn't hear anybody say parents. And so, I want to say that one of the bright spots is our parents. And the reason that I say that is, if you think about these three years, in many ways, huge swathes of them are lost. And they had to bear the, the adjustments. And they had to be the ones to make arrangements for the kids. They became teachers. They had to adapt and adjust. And they had to deal with the children that were having issues at home, and some of the mental health, things like that. So, I really look at the parents and the students. I mean, I was at the holiday concert at West High School. And to see these young people do what they do, and they're, display their gifts and talents, it just, it brought tears to my eyes. It's really amazing what kids can do. And the last thing that I wanted to mention is the teachers as well. We have so many great teachers. I've known them personally. I've had, my children have been taught by them. I've gotten to know them. And there are many that are really bright spots as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Bremmen, back to you for a question. And this time, let's start with, I'm trying to figure out if anybody hasn't started yet. You're not going to volunteer if you didn't?
I'm reluctant to raise my hand, but I probably should, to be fair.
Okay, Casey, we'll see what this question is. You, you asked for this. Okay, Bremmen, go ahead.
So, there's been a lot of focus on the performance of students and test scores, children's growth and development. What steps could you take as a member of the Board of Education to explore ways to increase test scores and ensure that the increases are seen for all students, not just some of the normally higher-performing students?
Well, I would say, and this may be a little bit different answer, is that maybe we shouldn't have just a standardized test for all children. My four kids, well, I should say, three, one's very young. My four kids, well, I should say, three, one's very young, but even they, being from the same family, are so different, and they learn and behave very differently. So perhaps instead of having standardized tests and holding everybody to that, is we have different measurements instead, and different ways in which we teach, and instead of having a rigid structure, we cater towards the differences of all the different children and their unique needs. I'm a very visual person, others like to read, and I think we need to cater more to them, instead of making them fit our tests. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Liz?
Yeah, this is something that I am very passionate about. As a teacher, I was always tasked with looking at each of my individual student's growth, not just on a final test score, but in each standard. And I know that our teachers are skilled at doing those summative and formative assessments and figuring out where their students' needs are, and scaffolding in their classroom to meet their students' needs. So I feel like continuing to support teachers as they deliver their curriculum is really important for this. I would note that, I think it was in 2015 that the district adopted the Bridges Math Program, and we saw for the next several years, an increase of almost 4% year after year of our standardized test scores. So I do think there's a lot of power in adopting the right curriculum. And the work of the Education Committee, which I chaired the first two years that I was on the school board, and I am still a part of this year, is currently looking at our literacy curriculum. We will go over a review of that in March, and I believe that we do need to make some significant changes to our literacy curriculum. I've heard that from teachers, I've heard that from a lot of parents, and so I support a look at getting a more structured and a better literacy program that includes all the elements of those foundational reading skills, and I believe when we adopt that, we will see the same kind of growth we saw in math, with increases of 4% to 5% year after year. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Matt?
All right, yeah. This is what I really enjoy, is talking about how we can do better performance in the classroom, how we can get children to achieve better. That is the core function of the schools. When I hear about things that are great, when we're adding buildings or bureaucrats, I think that's the wrong direction. I want to see resources directed to the classroom, and also by, as we talked about earlier, recruiting and retaining great teachers, and really put a focus on the classroom and the teaching and the students. Because if we're wondering why we're declining in enrollment, people don't come to schools in large numbers because athletic facilities or shiny buildings, they want to see performance. And this is where we need to focus, good teachers and resources in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Thank you. As I understood the question, the question was about improving our test scores, and the six years that I have been on the board, we have never settled for mediocrity. We have always constantly said, we want to improve our test scores, and we have constantly held steadfast to, being committed to improving our test scores, and our teachers have too, we all have. I will say that the test scores are, it's, things are going to be a little skewed as a result of the pandemic, so it's going to be hard to put much faith in some of these test scores, because our kids were, you know, in virtual learning for a long time. So it is going to be difficult to improve our test scores after the pandemic, but that's not just Oshkosh, that's the rest of the country as well. We, I do agree with what my fellow board member Liz said about our literacy curriculum. I support reevaluating some of our literacy curriculums to possibly get our numbers up a little higher. And I just, you know, when you talk about numbers and test scores, behind every test score is a child, and, you know, the test score doesn't always tell you the true story of what's going on there. So I personally, in my opinion, find that test scores are not always accurate, but I do understand that we are bound by DPI to track our test scores, and that they are important, and I value that. But, you know, it's going to be hard to see what happens after the pandemic, because I don't think we're going to get an accurate read on where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
Well, I think first and foremost, we need to look at surrounding areas and see what they're doing, and collaborate together to see if we can find a solution. Also, I think that just getting back to the basics of reading, writing, math, science will help us tremendously. We need to celebrate every single win, and we need to meet students, most importantly, where they're at to help improve these scores. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
So in reviewing DPI data, it's obviously very concerning of the literacy and the math scores that we've been looking at, but it's nothing new. So it's a little disheartening that it's taken a pandemic for us to, as a community, realize where these scores are. I think we can mostly agree that the economically disadvantaged students are the ones who are suffering the most, and that's throughout our whole district. Obviously, there is going to be schools that are more economically disadvantaged, and I think some of that money that we got for COVID funds should be directed in those areas. I know we did the summer, a summer climb program at Washington, and that was targeted to improve some literacy. There were some notable issues that they had seen there, and I believe it was very successful. So I would, I would recommend being able to expand those such, with as much money as we got for COVID, let's use it for things besides masks and hand sanitizer and partitions. Let's use it to educate our children and make up for what adults took away from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to you, Karen, and please start with Kelly this time.
Okay, Kelly. So this is a topic that has come up quite a bit, and was submitted on several questions, I'm guessing. Even though district leadership has communicated to the community that CRT is not a curriculum, and that the concept is not taught in our district, why are there people that believe it is?
Well, great question. I think that it's important to really be able to teach our children history, the proper history, and I think it's become an issue, because we don't want students to learn that because they are a certain color, they are racist, or they are, you know, below another student or another person. And really, we want students to learn how we overcame slavery, and how we overcame issues upon us, and we still need to focus on what needs to be done, rather than creating a new type of racism.
Thank you. Sarah?
So I think a lot of, what has happened in the last few years, especially with the pandemic, is the community doesn't necessarily trust what's being told to them, whether it's just in regular everyday life, or if it's within the district. There's been quite a few issues with the school board and school district leadership since the beginning of COVID, and when they're telling you that your child is fine, and education isn't being affected, and they, they're going to learn well in virtual, and we, as parents, knew that that wasn't true, we no longer trust, maybe necessarily, what our district's telling us. And it's going to take some time for the community to trust the district, that if the district states that CRT is not being taught, then let's just make sure. I mean, I know that you can see areas of the curriculum on the district website, but it doesn't help anyone to make someone the oppressed and someone the oppressor, so I would hope that our school district is not using such programs. Thank you.
Casey?
I would agree with what Sarah said. I think there's just a lot of mistrust as to what is or isn't going on in schools. I know Matt spoke about the pronouns and not requiring parental consent for that. Those are the sort of things that parents or anybody sees, and it raises a red flag. So if they're not requiring consent for that, what are they requiring it for? What else are they hiding? And whether they are or aren't, it's a valid question. The other thing is, is I think as a society, we put too much trust and credence in what we see on TV and in the news. What's going on in California may not be happening here, and that's for all issues, not just CRT. So I think instead of relying on these media outlets, or experts, or whatever it might be, we need to go do the research and see for ourselves. And a lot of parents have done that, or have tried to, and they're up against a wall. So again, it's a bit of a red flag for anybody trying to get those answers. They don't get them. Thank you.
Liz?
Yes, so I think one of the biggest problems here is just coming up with a shared definition of CRT. It's easy to say that CRT does not exist in our schools and is not taught, because in academic terms, it's a curriculum that's taught in law schools. But if we had a better understanding of what parents' concerns are when they ask about CRT, I think it would build a bridge where we could have a conversation about the importance of teaching an honest history of the United States. And I know, in my classroom, some of my students' favorite books to read were actually about Japanese-American internment camps, because that's not a common thing that students learn about. And we had conversations about genocide around the world, and I had students bring up the Armenian genocide, and just all these things that most of us never really discuss. And it's important for students to be exposed at an age-appropriate level to these ideas. You know, my own daughter, one of her favorite books when she was little was The True Story of Ruby Bridges. So I think it's really important to have these histories be a part of our curriculum, but just making sure that parents understand it's always been handled respectfully, it's always been handled at an age-appropriate level. Teachers are not allowed to include their opinions, that's in district policy, but just helping facilitate a dialogue amongst students to help them see themselves as a citizen in the world, and the changes that they can make to make a better community for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Matt?
When I think about this topic, I think that the administration and the board could go a long way, just by being transparent. It is a trust issue. People don't trust what's happening, and I think if we could get a good look at the curriculum, if it was available for us all to view, that would go a long way. To the extent, you know, I mean CRT, it's basically the idea that certain individuals are intrinsically racist, they're guilty of collective crimes committed before they were born, that certain people just never make it anywhere, because the system is so stacked. And think of what that does to those young people that think they can't, they'll never get anywhere. So it's not that you're going to find the word CRT in an open records request, they're ideas, and they're floated around, and to the extent that they do exist, and I don't know that they do, formally being taught, if I'm on the board, they'll be rooted out, and that's for sure. I think, you know, a lot of it is really just politics in the classroom, is more where I go with it. Imagine a literacy class where you're given five options, and it's all about LGBTQ issues, gay, race, environment, and they're sort of channeling you and making you engage just certain subject matter. And I think that that is a problem, and I know personally, my son experienced some of this, and was unable to actually talk about or write about abortion.
Matt, excuse me, your time is up.
Thank you.
Stephanie?
I'm going to answer this question as a parent. I know I can never fully take off my school board hat, because I am a current school board member, but as I mentioned, I had a son that graduated in 2020, and he spent his, he has spent his entire education was with Oshkosh schools. He went to Lakeside, South Park, and West High School. And I, as a parent, have helped him study, and I have gone over his curriculum from, and now I now have two high schoolers, and I go over their curriculum, and I help them study. And I have never come across anything that gave me pause that we have been teaching in our schools. I really haven't, and we do not teach CRT. We don't even come close to teaching CRT. We will never teach CRT. And in fact, I feel, as a parent, and watching my son from go from kindergarten to graduating, and I have another graduate in 2022, I have helped them study, and I have not seen anything in our curriculum that would give me pause. And I think that while there may be room for some more communication about our curriculum, if parents feel like they don't know that what's going on, I would be happy to show textbooks to people that want to see them, or invite them to classes to look in on. I don't think any teacher would have a problem with a parent observing a class, so I would just like to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, Brimman, back to you for a question, please, and this time, let's start with Liz.
A bill, excuse me, a bill recently introduced in the Wisconsin Legislature would require private and voucher schools to declare the amount of tax money they receive. This is funding which has been deducted from the allocations to local school systems, and redirected to the private or voucher school. Would you be in favor of the bill, and should schools receiving these funds be required to submit performance reports?
Yes, I am in favor of that bill, and I believe any schools that receive public taxpayer dollars should be subject to the same DPI standards that public schools are subject to. I don't know that they'd have to do the performance standards for all their students, but at least for the students who they are educating on behalf of taxpayer funds.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, I would support the voucher system, and I would support, I'm a big fan of the ability to people, for people to leave failing schools and go wherever they, they're succeeding, and wherever they want, and the ability to have the choice, and the, so I don't know if I'm answering the specific second half, maybe you could add.
Yeah, do you want me to ask it again?
Sure.
Okay. A bill recently introduced in the Wisconsin Legislature would require private and voucher schools to declare the amount of tax money they receive. This is funding which has been deducted from the school, or deducted, excuse me, from the allocations to local school systems, and redirected to the private voucher schools. Would you be in favor of, I guess, that disclosure? And should schools getting those funds be required to submit performance reports?
Yeah, so, thank you for reading that again. Yes, anything that provides transparency on that level, I would definitely be in favor of, yes.
Thank you. Stephanie?
I would like to say exactly what, I'm in full support of voucher transparency. In fact, I currently serve as the Chair of the Legislative Committee, and one thing that we have been working on for three years now, is we would like to have voucher transparency on the tax bill. We would like each taxpayer and each homeowner to see on a line item, how much of their tax dollars is going to the voucher program, because I feel like the average citizen may not be aware that there are millions of unaccounted dollars that are going towards these voucher schools, and they do not have to, they currently, we cannot track them, and we don't know the results of that, those funds, we don't know where they're going, how they're being used, et cetera. So I support voucher transparency, and if I am re-elected, I will continue to promote voucher transparency on our tax bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
Yes, I also support transparency with any vouchers, and I do believe that we need to prepare for universal vouchers across the board. I think that it's also important that any money does follow the student, not the building or the school itself.
Okay, thank you. Sarah?
I support, as many have stated, the transparency. I think that's what many school districts lack, is some sort of transparency, or a manner of which you find out that information. So as Kelly had spoken, it's very possible in the next few years, it will be a universal voucher program, and whether we like that or not, you know, I can see, I don't want money going away from the public schools, but I understand a parent's desire to put their students in the best school they can. And our DPI rating, or grades in literacy and math, if you have an opportunity to have your student go to an excellent school, or one with lower proficiencies, I'm okay with that voucher thing. I do think that it's the taxpayers' right to be able to see where that's going, and I just, I really want the district to think about that, that we are going to have to provide a- to provide a great education if we want our families to stay in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey.
Just as those before me have said, I'm also in favor of the voucher system and anything that promotes transparency in all aspects. I think that's one of the things that the school district, not just this one, but across the nation, has been lacking on is just transparency across the board. So anything we can do that, anything that we can do to that effect to make information transparent to anybody, it'll just help to keep everything in check. And I would also like to see that the money stay with the children to the point of homeschooling as well. If they choose to stay home, that tax money should be redirected back to them as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Karen, do you have one last question for you to ask?
I do. So.
And would you like to know who that's going to?
Oh, certainly.
Well, so would I. How about to Stephanie?
All right, Stephanie. This will typically fall upon you as a school board member. If there's a proposal to ban a book, what process should be used?
Oh, it's hard going first. I believe that we have a policy in place already. We have existing policies regarding this topic. Offhand, I don't know the policy number or name, but I do believe that we have a policy that would support this in place already. And I would guess that if you wanted to ban a book, it would begin with submitting a request to a teacher and then it would go through the proper channels. If the question is, do I support book banning or, geez, that's a whole other can of worms. But I don't support banning books and I don't know if we ever have banned books before in our school district. But again, I'm sure that we do have a policy in place to go through that and we would follow that policy. And that is one of the key functions of a school board is to implement and review policy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kelly.
Could you ask the question one more time, please?
If there is a proposal to ban a book, what process should be used?
I think first and foremost, you should be asking the difficult questions. Why are we wanting to ban this? And then, of course, following policy, whatever that may be, that be set. But I think also reaching out and really, you know, coming together, asking the difficult questions together and maybe even in fact, reaching out to community, the community members to see, you know, their thoughts and hear their ideas in regards to that. But I think we first must ask the, ask the questions of why are we banning this? What is the issue? And go from there.
Okay, Sarah.
So I'm assuming this question came because in the news more lately and it's every, so many months, there are some books that have been banned throughout our country, some of which are classics that most of us probably read in middle school or high school. So I think we need to establish that process of number one, who's, who's making the request and make sure it's within district and it's not some outside people that want to be meddling with our district. Why, what's the purpose of it being requested to be banned? And just have it, I don't think you need to have a committee for something like that because I cannot imagine that it happens very often. But there should be a process in place that's transparent, that any one of us in the community can take a look at and as well as ensure that it's being fairly applied and it's not just one views because we're going to get rid of some classics because it may teach parts of history that we may or may not be very proud of. Or if it's other reasons, maybe social issues that some families are not, not real comfortable discussing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Casey.
I guess I'll start off with, I recall a certain group of individuals that banned and burned books and that led into some pretty atrocious things. So I guess first of all, I would say, where are we going with this if we start to see books being banned? Let's look at it now before it leads into other things. On the other hand, I know there have been some articles recently that have come up in, I guess, the pornography arena that these sort of things are in schools. So, yes, there, I don't know if you could put together a process in 90 seconds, but there has to be some thought by the community or a group to say, what's really going on here? What's the end goal? Before somebody just sweeps these books out of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz.
So the current process we have, I'm not sure if it's a board policy or an administrative policy. You can find both on our website. But the current process we have is that the media specialists review all the materials that are in our libraries and our curriculum, the books that are used. And they have degrees, six years of post-high school education that help them be, I think, the best judges of what's age-appropriate for our elementary students, our middle school students, and then our high school students. Because obviously, you're going to find very different books in each of those libraries. As far as if this were to come up, I agree with Sarah that we'd want to make sure it's really a local reason that it's coming up because this is happening all across the country. We'd want to know why someone wants to ban a book. There's always other options for students to read different books. That doesn't mean they have to stop every other student in the school from reading a book that might make them uncomfortable. And I think it's important to note that these sort of things should start as, you know, our district's formal complaint policy. And then they work their way up to the board and the board is kind of the last stop. So my hope would be that the concern someone who might want to ban a book has would be resolved before it gets to the board for a formal vote. And I just want to note, I was actually reading today about a school district in Texas that banned 850 books and of those books, the majority of them were written by non-white and non-Christian authors. And they were autobiographical about those individuals' experiences with racism and bias. So I think it's important to consider which voices are we silencing.
Thank you. Matt.
Yeah, well, there's two different reasons why books are banned and we kind of talked about both of them. Some of them are, some of our classics that have, as we mentioned, some things from history that we're not proud of. But my real concern is the sexualization of kids and pornography. Some of the books that have found their ways into school libraries are really quite concerning. Pornography has no place in schools, period. It should be zero tolerance. What is pornography? I don't know, but I'll let you know when I see it. It's one of those things. And so I really think that if a complaint comes in, it should be dealt with by the superintendent and if there is a continuing issue, it's got to come before the board so that there can be an open discussion and we can make a decision on it. But there are a lot of bad books out there in our schools throughout the country. I'm not sure about Oshkosh, but that'll be something that if I'm on the board, I'll be definitely looking into.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to have a lightning round. So timekeeper, we're going to give them 30 seconds for this question, okay? And I'm going to ask it. Just as soon as I find where I put it. There we go. Because we're building some new facilities, like the new middle school, I need to know what features should the new school buildings have in terms of energy efficiency and renewable energy? And let's start with you, Stephanie.
Okay. 30 seconds, starting now, right?
Okay.
Yes. Our new school should definitely be energy efficient. It should have, yes, I would hope that we use solar, solar options, completely efficient for cooling. I often joke that Oshkosh West High School was built in the wrong climate. That's a California school in Wisconsin. So I think that we need to make sure that we, any schools we build are made for Wisconsin, i.e. a nice pitched roof to melt the snow and easy to maintain. We don't need courtyards. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, go.
I agree, energy efficient. I think that we need to be looking at the best use of taxpayer dollars, whatever that may be.
Sarah.
I will disagree only because I went to school at Oshkosh West and I love the courtyard. So I really would like to live in California in a courtyard. So as much natural light as possible, so everyone has feel-good moods, is definitely something that I would support. Obviously, energy efficient, but I just want as much natural light and nature, plants, something that just is a calming in a building that can be chaotic at times. And then as a parent, I would really like for there to be a really good drop-off and pickup point so it's easier than it is now. Thank you.
Thanks, that's a good one. Casey.
I know it doesn't really apply in this question. Personally, I like to restore old buildings before building a new one. That's just me. But I would also say that as many windows as possible and make it feel comfortable and natural. Having gone through some of the schools in our district, they can be a little bit sterile, almost hospital-like. But that's just a personal thing. So yeah, I would also agree with as much sun and outdoor exposure as possible. Thank you.
Thanks. Liz.
The natural light thing, it may be personal, but there's also research that shows that schools that have more natural light and more windows, students' performance and students' attentiveness goes up. So we do need as many windows as possible. And I agree that it needs to be energy efficient because that creates cost savings and it's also the future. And our schools are built and expected to last at least about 100 years. And so we need to be building schools that are equipped to handle the future and changes that might be coming.
Thank you. Matt.
Well, I did disagree with the building of a new school. I think a renovation would have suited us better with the demographics and things that we're looking at. But I think that whatever we do, we do have to keep in mind that this is taxpayer money and that we have to be good stewards of that and we have to be responsible in our design and at the same time, make it as beautiful and architecturally pleasing as possible, but keeping our budget in mind. Thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, I'm going to ask each of you, I'm going to give each of you up to 30 seconds to say anything that you would like to address that either, if you would like to refute something that you heard tonight or, what's the word, amplify something that you said, if anything at all that you would like the viewers to see, to hear, that they have it already from you. And with that, we'll start with you first, Matt.
Okay, yeah, I thank everybody for having me here today. It's been wonderful. I just think, you know, Myles McGuire at the Oshkosh Examiner did an article and the headline was, "The Challengers Claim Board Out of Touch." And I think that that's kind of the key. All four of us challengers, in our own way, have come to the same conclusion that the board of the administration are not in touch with the family and the parents. And we need another direction. And I think that probably.
30 seconds isn't very long, is it?
So we need a new direction, but thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Liz.
Yes, I just wanted to note that the 2019 survey was not a staff-wide survey. That was only district administration office survey and it was an internal survey. It was not done by the board. And that's one of the reasons we responded with the 2020 Gallup Poll Survey. I also wanted to note that the district so far has only received $2 million of, we call them ESER funds, that's the COVID relief funds. And those are grants, which means we have to spend money that we have in our budget and then we have to apply for reimbursement. And I think it's important for the public to understand that that's the process.
Thank you so much for clarifying those points.
Casey.
I think the last point that I would like to make is there's been a lot of time and money, resources, energy, people, you name it, on how can we stay safe? And in my opinion, the data shows that we are all very safe, especially the kids. And I think we, it's time to drop the whole COVID shield altogether and just get back to business. This has been a very convenient way to deflect a lot of things and I think it's time to move on. So we're not at risk, everybody's safe, especially the kids, and let's move forward.
Thank you, Casey. Sarah.
I'm going to take a little bit of different direction. I like to do things on my own here. And instead of asking you to vote for me, I would actually like anyone that's watching to consider being a substitute teacher for our school district to help out the teachers. There's a lot of them that are giving up their planning hours or their lunch hours. And I've been talking about it for a year, so I might as well use my 30 seconds to ask anyone that might consider just a little volunteerism and become a substitute teacher in our district. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Sarah. Kelly.
I want to take my time here just to thank all of the hardworking staff and teachers within our district. And also, we need to make sure that no child or no family falls through the cracks regardless of any type of economic status. We need to make sure that we are doing everything that we can to ensure a good education for our children. Thank you.
Stephanie.
I would just like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum and I would like to thank all the panelists for participating. Tonight was the first time I met some of the other candidates, so it was nice to meet them. And I just wanted to say that serving as the past six years on the Board of Education has been an absolute joy and I humbly ask for your vote on the 15th and I appreciate the feedback from the candidates that we received this evening. And thank you very much for watching tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this concludes the Oshkosh Area School Board Primary Candidates Forum. You may vote for two of these candidates on Tuesday, February 15. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. You may register when you go to vote on Election Day. Take a proof of residence with you. Everyone must show a voter ID, a photo voter ID. Go to myvote.wi.gov to find information on registration, ballots, acceptable photo IDs, and polling places. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County and Oshkosh Media, I want to thank all the candidates, panel members Karen Schneider and Bremen Keesi and all of the volunteers who were here with us tonight for participating in this forum. And finally, thanks to our audience who turned in via television, radio, Oshkosh Media, YouTube, or streaming video. Remember, our democracy depends on citizen involvement. Please vote on February 15. Thank you.